Roll call please.
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Glaubinger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Unical? Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Hey, we have a forum. For those who don't know, Barbara Unical is not able to join us because she was in an accident and is recovering. So Barbara, if you're watching, we wish you a quick and speedy recovery and hope to see you soon. Hey. The item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Before we go to the consent agenda, is there any item on the consent agenda that anyone provides to have to move for consideration later at the meeting? Seeing and hearing, no one asking for it to be moved. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
To approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Thank you, Stacy, for seconding. We please have a roll call.
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Glaubinger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
And Ms. Young?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes and the consent agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is public comments. I don't see anyone here. Janet, would you like to address? I mean, did not acknowledge it was public, but we kind of recognize you more as soon to be part of the board. Hey, with no public available or here, we'll move on to the staff reports. Hey, would you like to report?
So first we have Amanda. Margis, are you a youth services manager? She's, I'm pointing at the owl. She's virtual. Sorry. She's right there. Can't you see her? Who's going to be giving us a presentation on youth services material purchasing? Patrick's going to do his magic.
Hello.
Amanda?
Hi, Amanda.
Hello.
Shimming, I have power to share my screen. See, make sure I don't break anything. All right. So thank you to the board for having me to speak a little bit more about youth services and specifically about our collections and our collection development. I'm going to try to keep this very high level and not go into too much detail, but I'm going to apologize ahead of time because this is one area of librarianship in my job that I really love and I feel really passionate about, so I'll try to not be as verbose as I can be on this topic, but. So the first thing, just wanted to throw up some background, some information. One about our collection, so our youth services department does serve birth through 18 years old, which is pretty kind of healthy range to serve and just some stats about the size of that population here at Northbrook. And the total number of items in our circulation or our collection that's compared to our overall total numbers. And then also just to highlight that within our youth services department, we do have six dedicated selectors and that those selectors hold a master's of library degree and have taken coursework and training that has been specific to teen and youth materials, not just selecting of materials or have taken really advanced training on the subject as well, so. Just a little bit more about what our collection and what our overall collection development is trying to achieve and accomplish. And so again, this slide is just for information purposes. Like I said, birth through 12th grade, so it's a lot of ground to cover and hence why we have a lot of collections that we cover as well. And one reason, you know, people might ask like, why have so many collections? And it might seem a little bit confusing. But our collections do serve a couple of different purposes for breaking them down like this. Obviously, the big one, if you look through the first letters, is obviously identifying audience. Our juvenile collection generally serves kindergarten through middle school, whereas our teen collection, again, there's a little bit of crossover in the middle school ages up through high school. So that's one way we can point patrons to a collection that might be more appropriate for their child, their grandchild, who they're in the library looking for materials with. But the collections also, by breaking them up, we can break them up by format, which is also pretty useful with our youth materials in that we have quite a few formats. Number one, they're board books. Board books, if you're not familiar, have a cardboard and are generally targeted to our patrons that are really young, that might not be as gentle with our other materials as you would hope they would be. Another thing about that collection is it also does identify an audience because mostly it's looking at our toddlers, younger children, so you would find information in there, you'd find entertainment in there, alphabet, ABCs, those types of things, but if you look at the next one, picture books, again, it's a highly illustrated text, it's a certain size, so it's more of a format category, but even within picture books, you can see a range of ages. We've had picture books that are great for storytime, great for a two-year-old audience, but then we also have picture books that are very appropriate for a second grade or a third grade class as a read aloud or a paired reading situation, so. Even within a collection such as picture books that you think obvious, like, oh, very young kids, there can still be a range of ages and audience. So it's another thing that we try to keep in mind as we're directing patrons to an area for the materials that they're looking for. So material selection starts, you know, kind of at the top, you know, after we've received our education with our master's degree, our training, you know, how to gauge and evaluate materials for their appropriateness and including a collection. Another thing that we really use to guide us is the collection development policy here at the Northbrook Public Library. That's really where our selecting kind of begins, is what that policy lays out as the purpose of our collection. And the purpose of our collection is to inform, is to educate, it's to also share cultural experiences and recreational value to our patrons, so. That is what our collection's going to include. That's what we're going to make sure we are providing for our patrons because that's what our policy sets out. So to do that, we have quite a few tools. One of the tools that gets talked about a lot and that we do rely upon are professional reviews. Our professional review sources come from different publications, come from online sources. And, you know, one of the things we learned pretty early on in our selecting coursework for our material selection is to not always rely on just one review source to get many review sources. You want to check in with different publications because some of them might have a different perspective, some reviews are signed, so you know exactly who's reviewing the material. Some of them are unsigned, so there's an anonymity there that might provide for a more critical review. Some reviewers are paid, some are unpaid, they're volunteers for the publication. Some of them are educators and youth librarians themselves, so they all have different perspectives on them, so by looking at different reviews, we're getting a sense across the board overall of what that material will be appropriate for, and if it will be appropriate for our collection, and then of course, where within our collections it should fall. Another two documents that we do rely upon while we're selecting our materials is the ALA Bill of Rights and the ALA Freedom to Read. These are two sources I think are coming up a lot more in discussions around materials in libraries and whether they have places in libraries. So I'm not going to go into them too deep, but one of the things that always sticks out to me when I reread these statements is just the clear importance of the access, that by being a public library and a public institution, our main goal is to provide that access and that restriction to that access will be detrimental to the collection, to the community, and so that really is, again, one of those core things. Along with selecting materials, a responsibility is providing that access and keeping it free of restrictions as much as possible. So the next piece of how we handle our collections, how we interact with our collections as REers Advisory. Whereas material selection, we have a dedicated staff to that that have been highly trained, master level coursework, continual training. We do have REers Advisory is an expectation of all of our desk staff, so if you work at the Youth Services Desk, you are relied upon to be able to do a REers Advisory interview. And that's a really fancy term of saying how to recommend a book. Knowing that we are recommending books from birth through 12th grade. And that often our patrons who are that age, when they come in, are coming in with parents, they're coming in with caregivers, they're coming in with grandparents. So the REers Advisory interview isn't usually just one-on-one with a child, it's usually with a family member. So kind of involves that dynamic as well. Some of the other factors when we're trying to decide on what would be a good book to recommend to a patron. Obviously, we're at the age level. We have a 12-year-old that comes into the department looking for a book to read. We're going to want to know how old they are. We're also going to want to know their reading level. One of the trickier situations that sometimes comes up is that same 12-year-old maybe reads at a really high level at an upper high school or even a college level, which is amazing and it's incredible, but then that makes my job a little bit harder because books that are written at that high level might not be appropriate maturity-wise or content-wise for that 12-year-old reader, so how can we find material that has a high reading level but is still going to be of interest and have appropriate material for a 12-year-old? And like I said, of interest, that's another factor that we always take into when we're doing our REers Advisory interview. If that 12-year-old tells me they don't like dragons, then I'm not going to pull out a dragon book, I'm not going to pull out a fantasy book. So all those things come together in the interview and it can be very nuanced and it can be kind of a back and forth of, well, what do you think about this? What do you think about this? It's not always just coming up of a list of five books and saying, I hope you enjoy. It's a lot of back and forth and sharing of information. And just like with ordering materials, we have tools that we rely upon. Those professional reviews definitely come in handy, again, when we're doing REers Advisory. Within our department, we like to make lists and record sets of things that if you've read this, you might enjoy this. You know, sharing of different books that we've enjoyed. We even have one source that I do like to call out when talking about REers Advisory, it's called Novelist K through eight. It's actually a resource that's also available to our patrons, it's a database that we have. And it's an amazingly robust resource that not only gives a synopsis of the book, it gives the recommended age level of it, it gives the Lexile number, which is a number assigned to indicate the comprehension level of a book that some of our schools use. It includes keywords, descriptions of the writing style, if it's a series, it has the series, it's just, it's an amazing resource and it's very helpful to especially let patrons know when they do have questions about types of content that might be in a book to give them that extra level of information and let them know that they can access that information on their own as well. Another tool we use that comes up is called Common Sense Media. And this is kind of similar to a professional review is that that site has a team of people that give kind of a ranking to a book about its appropriateness for different ages based on different factors, like the level of drug use in the book or the level of violence. And so it's not necessarily a recommendation site, but it is, again, another outside source that we can definitely recommend to patrons if they want to know even more information, possibly even more detail if there is a certain area that they're of concern, that they want to know about the reading materials for their kids. And ultimately, at the end of the day, parents and caregivers have the final say in what their kids read. My job, my role and what I tell my staff is, you know, we walk them over to the shelf, we put the book in their hand and then, you know, we walk away. And it's their decision to take our recommendation, ask for other ones, you know, come back and say, we really like that, do you have more? But that is a choice between the parent and the child, the caregiver and the child, about what materials they're actually going to check out and take home and reviews. We always leave that decision up to them. Another thing, just to touch on real quick, again, because I have a special place in my heart, is displays. And the reason I mention them is because they are very much a REers Advisory tool, they're just another way, especially patrons that might not have the time or feel comfortable coming up to the desk of, just another way of letting them know, here are some great materials that you can discover here at the library on your own without having to interact with anyone if you want to. It's also a circulation tool. There are studies that have showed books that are face out on a display circulate 40% higher than books that are not, so it helps with circulation as well. And also it just, again, is that discovery tool within the library, if you come in and see something new that you've never seen before and can get that excitement level. The different displays we have in youth services, we have a staff picks one, which of course I enjoy highly. I encourage staff to put ones on there that, you know, again, they personally feel are really great books that a lot of people would enjoy or maybe some of those, you know, hidden gems that might not be as popular, that deserve attention. We have our seasonal displays, our monthly theme display, so currently if you walk by the Youth Services Department tonight, you would have seen our Black History Month display, we also would have seen our Love and Friendship one to kind of go along with Valentine's and March 1st, those will switch out. We also do have our Popular Picks display, which includes materials that are, you know, as the title, popular, so. According to circulation data, according to trends in youth media, like movies and TV shows. And also just things that are happening in popular culture, we try to have those materials on that display and have extra copies knowing that they are popular and that they're going to circ more. And then we have a new display that the only qualification to be on the new display is you've been added to the collection within the last three months, so. That's it. That's the only thing that that display indicates is the newness of the book, but we know patrons, especially our super users, like to come in and have one spot where they can check out things that may have seen already yet. And then the last thing just to touch on is intellectual freedom, and again, because this is coming up a lot in the media, in news reports around the country locally. And again, intellectual freedom is just another one of those cornerstones that I personally feel is very important to my career as a librarian, but I also feel a lot of my staff as well, is that intellectual freedom, again, is that right of every person to be able to access information for their education purposes, for their entertainment purposes, without restriction. And, you know, where that comes into, especially with censorship, is you know, this idea that if people find materials that are objectionable or they feel might cause harm, that if it denies access to other people, then that's going to make it better for everyone. Whereas really with intellectual freedom is saying, you know, you have a right to state your opinion about materials you might not agree with or you might find objectionable, but the people who put that information out into the world and the people who want to access that information, their right to have access to that information also needs to be protected. So it is very much, you know, a balance that, you know, people can object to materials and we have policies, we have a robust feedback system in place here at the library, we have our reconsideration process that people can go back to let their opinions be known about material, but we also as part of intellectual freedom, feel a responsibility to protect those people that do want to access those materials. And then also providing those materials and resources free from judgment. You know, like I said, my role in the REers Advisory interaction is not to make sure the book gets checked out and taken home. My role is to find those materials that I think might be good for that reader, but also to give enough information so that the parents and the caregivers can make that informed choice for their families, for their children, of whether or not this is reading material that they want for them. You know, so my role, you know, once I've recommended those books is sort of over and, you know, the judgment is is not going to be present there because that is the decision within that family. And my role in giving that information is so that they can make that informed choice. And we know within our collection, because we do serve a diverse community, we serve a community that has a lot of varied interests, that is also voracious readers and are also voracious information seekers, that we do need to have a wide breadth of material available and knowing that wide breadth of material and deep quality collections are going to include materials that some people might not agree with. And recognizing that is an important thing to acknowledge, but then also know that every reader has their book. And so if a certain material is not for that reader, we are happy to direct them to other materials, we're happy to have those other materials there and we do. But we still need to make sure that those materials are in the collection, that they are free to access for those people that are looking for them. I included just a little thing at the bottom because this is something that I always think about is, you know, the First Amendment also gets brought up sometimes in these conversations and that there is speech that legally is not protected by the First Amendment, but it is a very narrow definition of material that is child pornography, that is defamatory and that also is inciting imminent harm and violence and we would never have those materials, they would never be in our collection, they're not in our collection, so. You know, really making that very clear when we talk about censorship and we talk about materials that are seen as objectionable or have content that have questions about them, that that standard is very narrow and very clear. And we have many policies in place that would stop those materials from ever being a part of our collection. So my last slide is just a couple of the resources that we looked at when we were pulling this presentation together. And so that's all I have. But if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'll ask a question, Amanda. You know, we do get comments on a regular basis from patrons and, you know, as you know, they're typically raising questions about book and whether or not they're appropriate for our collection. We rely on staff to, you know, make those judgments and to do that. But some of those comments, you know, are sometimes focused on what I would call political issues. And so I'm curious to how those issues play into the decision-making process of what comes into the collection or do they play a process?
You know, so it's interesting because that question of political sort of balance and sort of that both sides question of making sure both sides of an issue are covered is oftentimes, I think, conflated with very, you know, if you have one side, you have to have the other side, but that other side is also then very narrowly defined. So within the collection, you know, we really don't evaluate it based off of a certain political ideology. You know, by having material that is covering an issue comprehensively and providing the information, we're going to have that there. You know, one of the things that in some of my training that I've come up with recently, especially with our EDI training, was the discussion of books that show traditional family values is how it gets described sometimes and you know, we do have books in our collection that show what some people would perceive as non-traditional family units. You know, families that depict two moms, two dads or possibly non-binary parents. And that some people might have an objection to that because within their families, they feel a certain way about those family dynamics and the question comes up, well, you have these books, you know, where's our side of it? Well, so many more books in our collection do depict heteronormative couples that have a mother, that have a father. Even our books that have family units that are represented by animal characters. More likely, if we were to run the statistics, are going to be a majority heteronormative, a mother and a father bear, taking care of baby bear. So, you know, oftentimes that discussion around those political issues tend to be there, but we never exclude a book because it comes from a certain political aspect. One of the things I found out recently during a search was we have a book about the Constitution by former Vice President Weiss Lynn Cheney, so. We have books from many different authors that express many different opinions and that we'd never exclude something because of a political bias or perceived of a political slant on it. If it's still met our collection development criteria, if it's still met our appropriateness for the collection and there was a community demand for it, we would of course add it.
Good to know. There's also a lot of sensitivity on the issue of what's in collections, not just with our public library, but also with the school libraries. And so is there a coordination with school libraries so that resources are available here, if they're not available there or for any reason they're removed from the school library so that it would be available here?
Yeah, so we definitely, you know, Julianne Medel, who's our School Services Librarian, is talking with a lot of our school librarians constantly. With our teacher card program, we get emails and calls pretty weekly from teachers. One recently, she was doing some book discussions and so she needed classroom sets of different books, so we were able to accommodate that for her. So yeah, we definitely are in communication with them. Not necessarily of the idea that if their materials were removed, that we would be able to fill in a gap, but that is one nice thing about being a library, because we do have some independence from our schools and their governance. But we are definitely, you know, paying attention to what's going on in our schools. You know, we're definitely like the Isle Awards, I know Summer was here earlier, not earlier, but last year, and gave a little bit more background about the Isle Awards, you know, that's definitely one initiative that we know our schools really promote and so we make sure we have extra copies because we want to make sure we're able to fill that need as well. Same thing with schools that supply us with their summer reading list, we always buy extra copies in the summer for that because we want to make sure kids that have to do their summer reading assignments, that we have the resources here for them, so. We definitely do try to make sure we're talking to the schools and making sure we can get the resources for the students that they need.
I also have questions. So Amanda, thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me virtually.
Thank you.
So yeah, so for my report, we thank you to everyone, hopefully everyone has signed a card for Barbara. We also are sending flowers to wish her courses speedy recovery. We, I also wanted to just mention a couple of things that I had in my report. One of which is the Illinois Library Association Legislative Meetups, they're doing them very differently this year, as I mentioned. They're doing this kind of three-step process where step one is just for library trustees and library staff and then step two is for library staff and trustees to meet with legislators. And those are happening on Zoom this year, so it'll be a statewide Zoom rather than before we had, you know, either at the Avarium Club in Buffalo Grove, we used to have breakfast there on President's Day. But this year it's a statewide Zoom and so the first one is Wednesday, February 22 at 10:00. And that's the one that's just for library staff and trustees. And then the next one is Monday, February 27 at 10:00. And that's where the ILA will give a legislative update and there'll be a chance to talk with different legislators. Lindsay Dorfman and I, Lindsay's the Director at the Glenview Public Library, are reaching out to our local legislators because the, up until COVID, the in-person legislative breakfast at the Avarium Club was almost a quarter century long and so we wanted to reach out to see if they would like to just meet with us and many of them visit our libraries regularly, but it's nice, we're hoping that we can get all of them together and so we're working on that and when we have more information, I'll of course share that. But if anyone would like to attend either of those Zoom meetings, please let me know and I can get you registered. So there's that. And then I also wanted to mention in my report, I talked about the Civic Room Grant that Kelly had written and presented to the Civic Foundation, so not to be confused with the two and I, Anna and I gave a presentation on Monday at Civic. The grant is to cover turning Civic into a Zoom room, as we've talked about previously for both like meetings, like our board meeting and staff events, but also of course for patrons to reserve the room. They did not make a decision at that meeting, the major grants committee is looking into it and they told us we should know by March, so fingers crossed that they will find this a worthy endeavor and agree to fund it. It's about 20, just under $25,000 to do the the needed adjustments. And then I also wanted to mention something that wasn't in my report and that is I had last fall, and I know I've mentioned this to a number of you individually, read Lily Zhang's new book, DEID Constructed, and was absolutely blown away by it. And so I had reached out to them just to see if there was a possibility of working with them in the future, thinking there was no way because this is a nationally recognized EDI consultant who is in high demand, but surprisingly, they reached back out and were like, yeah, let's talk. And so Kelly and I met with them in December. And then in January, we sent them some information on the work that we had done with the library, um, with our EDI committee over the last two years, as well as the work that we had done with Blackberry Collection. And uh, Susan Wolf and Michelle Mustowski, who are two EDI committee co-chairs. And I met with Lily this past Tuesday um, to talk about the proposal and see if there's an opportunity for us to work together. And so Lily uh, said that they would be very interested in working with us, which is, oh, I'm kind of fangirling a little bit. It was pretty cool. Um, and so, so we, we had a great conversation. They had sent in a preliminary report, a preliminary proposal, which were, they're going to be adjusting based on some of our conversations. But one of the things that um, is really great about Lily's approach to EDI work is that they take an outcomes-based approach to it, and that is very evident in the proposal. Um, and they also gather quantitative data so that we can actually assess whether or not we're meeting the outcomes that we've outlined. Um, so for instance, if we say that, you know, we want, you know, patrons that are, you know, are immigrants and feel more welcomed when they come in, we first need to know how many patrons are immigrants. And then find out what can we do to help them feel more welcomed. And then how do we assess whether we've achieved it? Um, oftentimes in a lot of the DEI work, it can be very easy to be like, well, we did the thing and it must have worked. Um, and Lily's approach is very much about focusing on how do you actually assess this? Um, and, and so we're um, going to be giving them some more information and hopefully um, getting a revised proposal that we can have the board look at uh, next month. Uh, we're going to be talking with the EDI committee about this at their next meeting next week. Um, but I do think that this is a really great way to actually quantify. Not quantify, that's not the right word, but to have some measurable goals that we would be able to clearly state whether or not we've achieved, like are we actually succeeding in the things we say we want to be achieving? Um, so, I don't, I don't have the proposal for you guys to look at right now, obviously, because they're going to be revising it. But this is something that I think is pretty exciting. Um, it does, of course, um, we will be to discuss if the board was interested in uh, working with Lily and pursuing this, how that would intersect with our strategic plan process. Um, because of course, if we're gathering all this data on the EDI front, is there, you know, are we duplicating efforts with the strategic plan process? And I did talk to Lily a little bit about that, and they felt that there could definitely be um, some ways of combining those efforts. Um, so, so it was just a really high-level kind of FYI, uh, and more information to come. But it's um, it's pretty exciting. They're laughing because I'm so excited and they, I know. So, um, and I'm happy to answer any questions on any other parts of my report. They're really amazing. I talked to them and it was really cool.
So, did you say before that they still have, they have one slot open and it hasn't been filled? Like,
It could be us.
I know.
They said that.
Would they let us, like, when do we have to make a decision or, you know, they're not going to fill that?
We're going to send a revised timeline, um, because they had said like, oh, I, I can start right away. And we were like, oh, so like, we're not there. So I said, what about maybe thinking about the fall? They were like, oh yeah, that could, that could work. So, um, we, like, I told them that this would have to go to the board and that they were totally fine with that. They're like, of course, whatever process needs to happen. And, and so if in March, the board feels that, you know, like, we need more information. You know, Lily said that they would be happy to meet with the board and answer questions as well. So it doesn't, I, this isn't like a March, you have to do this and we have to approve it. It would be just like any other proposal where if we needed more information, we would get more information. Um, if you wanted to talk directly with Lily, then we would set that up. Um, so,
Yeah.
Yeah, basically though, it sounds like they, they're saying yes.
I just was curious then in the, I know we were talking about the strategic plan.
Yeah.
How that would.
Intersect, yeah.
Can they do like a sub?
Yeah, right. Yeah. I don't have all those answers yet, but.
Alright, thanks Kate. Is there any other questions before we move on? Okay, our next item is board member reports. Anybody have anything to report? Okay, uh, the only thing I would report is there was a New York Times article this week. If anyone saw it, it was a front page on the website um, about libraries. It was like a pictorial of a number of libraries throughout the country. And it talked about the value in place for libraries in current society. Um, I think if you haven't seen it, or if you're looking at it, I don't think there'll be new ground for anybody in this room. Um, but you know, from time to time, people do make comments. I'm sure others in this can get it about old libraries are outdated and why do we need libraries anymore? And it kind of answers that question pretty nicely. To talk about different things libraries do besides house books.
Is it the love letter to libraries, long overdue, or was it a different one? Sorry.
I will, um, I will get that from the library's New York Times subscription, which patrons can also access through our website at Northridge, that info, and I will send that out to the board. Sure. And I'm happy to show anyone how to use any of our wonderful electronic resources at any time, except during the board meeting.
We told New York Times and like Wall Street Journal, you have subscriptions.
With the text space, right? Like you can't flip the page.
It depends on the, on the, um, magazine or newspaper.
New York Times will let you review a certain number of articles per month without charge, but they do sometimes require you to give it.
I know, I always exceeded. There's like five.
Oh, you have to give a private problem to.
I'm going to send you guys some tomorrow. For it with your taxes, so. Oh, do the New York Times app? Yeah, I hear you. It's a slightly different process, but one day.
Alright, so unfinished business, there is none on the agenda this month. We'll move to new business. Um, first item on new business is a review of the library financial policies. Um, this is something we asked Kate to do after a few months, because we wanted to, after everything that went on in the fall, does every pressure for us as to what is um, required to be submitted to the board and what is not? And then just generally, so we understand the financial policies. Kate, can you spend a few minutes?
Sure. Um, and so I, I listed all of the different financial policies. Two oh four is pretty um, basic in that it just says like, the board um, is tasked through the statute with determining if there are enough funds to meet the needs of the library to support the community. Um, and if not, to take action to address that issue. Um, our banking procedures are more on a month-to-month basis. So every month, Jamie and Jay get to sign big stacks of checks. The checks that they sign are the ones that require two signatures, which are six hundred dollars or higher. I sign um, twice a month, what we call the librarian checks. And those are anything that are under six hundred and those require um, just a single signature. But with those, Jamie also reviews the monthly account recs, which show all of the checks that I've signed for the month. Um, so that's another cross-check that we have as well within that. Um, and the goal of this is of course to, you know, prevent any type of fraud from happening and making sure that we have strong internal controls. So a lot of these policies, that is the main focus around it. And then for the authority to spend, um, this was a new one that we actually added. Well, this feels like a long time ago now. In um, spring of twenty twenty, um, when we didn't have this in effect before then. And this determines how much um, I'm authorized to spend uh, on items in the budget as well as items that are not in the budget. And it also lays out when a formal bid process is required. And so in this, um, I'm authorized to spend on budgeted items up to twenty-five thousand and items not in the budget up to five thousand, um, myself or a designee, which is typically Anna, because it's usually like a maintenance type thing. Um, and so this was something that I had backwards in my head. It was twenty-five thousand um, a non-budgeted. And so, the contract that we had spoken of previously should have been brought to the board. And so I, I had talked to Jay about this and I apologize, this is a hundred percent, that was a hundred percent my fault. So moving forward, of course, um, this was a refresher that I shouldn't have needed, but did. Um, so it's good that we're also reviewing these. So anything twenty-five thousand or higher um, will come directly to the board. And some of those things do require a formal bid. It's usually construction-related. Um, and that's laid out in the um, compiled statutes for when a formal bid is required. And then we move on to the investment policy, which states um, like what the library's investment strategy is. Um, and basically to do kind of a really quick recap, it's making sure we get the highest return while of course complying with all of the statutes around how we can invest money as a unit of local government. And then the last piece is the fund policy. This is the one that we usually talk of when we talk about transferring money out at the end of the fiscal year into the capital improvement fund. Um, and so this stipulates that we should have four to twelve months of a fund balance at all times, which is very helpful as it has been this year when Cook County did not release tax bills until really late. Um, and so this allows us to make sure that we have the daily cash flow to meet the bills that we need to pay at the library. So those are our overarching financial policies, and I'm happy to answer any questions any board member has.
So this is the policy as, is it wasn't changed or something?
Is, no.
Okay.
Yeah, and so it was, we had budget and banking, and then we added authority to spend investment and funds. We had not had those previously, so those were, I know it seems like a long time ago, but it feels weird because it was during COVID. So we hadn't really, yeah.
Any questions? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the fiscal year twenty-four draft budget. Um, so Kate and Anna are going to give us a presentation about the budget that's in the materials. Um, and then we'll give some feedback if there's any comments, questions, concerns about the budget. So that Kate and Anna can revisit and present the latest version at the next meeting.
Um, so we're going to be talking about the FY twenty-four budget. Um, so we're going to be going over three areas. Uh, the first is the considerations that we took into account when um, putting together the budget. Um, I'm going to be going over those and then Anna is going to take you through the revenues and expenses. So first we get to considerations. And when we're putting together the budget, we look at what projects we expect to be doing in the next fiscal year. Uh, one of the things that we've been really focused on for the last couple of years is the Climate Action Plan. And while we will still be focused on that, we do not plan to have any large projects with that in the coming year. It's really going to be a year of learning, um, continuing for uh, to have the committee learn and to have staff learn more about sustainability. Um, so there will not be anything big with this. Um, our Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Initiatives, of course, we've talked a lot about those with the board. Um, those of course will be put into the strategic plan as well, but we expect to have um, action steps and different things that we'll be working on with staff, as well as doing staff training um, to continue furthering our efforts in this area. And then we do have um, some building projects that are in the works. And I realize I don't have, if I pull up my little cheat sheet, it's going to show it. I'm going to have Anna remind us, oops, I'm going to have Anna remind us the different building projects.
Building projects that we have in fiscal year twenty-four is, are, is the landscaping project. Ceiling and striping of the parking lot, doing some concrete work, doing um, handrails and redoing some signage outside. Or no, I'm not, a signage on the corner of Cedar and Cherry. Um, we moved the security camera access control and alarm system to fiscal year twenty-four. Since we, when we went through the process in the fall, we hadn't found a consultant, so we're going to push that off um, to next year. And um, we are going to start investigating an HVAC automation system upgrade.
Our system is hanging on in years.
And then our, our boilers are, they work and they're great. And Joe Scatino, our maintenance, our facilities manager, likes our boiler system because he is able to maintain it and we don't have to hire in all the time when they're, when something needs to be fixed. So, um, and, and they're maintained well. So while they are on the facility plan for replacement, we don't really have a, a plan to put them there. On the list because if something were to happen to them, but we don't really have a, you know, we're not thinking to replace them, but if they need to be replaced, they're on the list. Um, so those are the projects.
Thanks, Anna. I was not going to remember every single one. Um, we of course know that we're working on the salary bench, benchmarking project right now. Um, so for the next fiscal year, it will be rolling that benchmarking out and integrating it into our hiring practices. And then of course, the strategic plan, um, which we'll be working on creating, which will then in turn guide projects for FY twenty-five and beyond. So, other things when putting together the budget that we um, looked at were, was group insurance. Um, which, as we talked about, I'm trying to think, how many months ago? Four or five months ago, about are there ways that we can look at whether or not um, insurance needs to be adjusted? Are there ways that we can, you know, institute cost savings for both staff and the library while still maintaining um, the really great insurance we have? So that's something we're going to be looking at. Um, our liability insurance, especially um, with cybersecurity stuff, those numbers just keep, keep going on up. So that's something that we look at and that Anna works with our insurance broker very closely to see what we project will happen in the coming year. Um, of course, personnel is the largest portion of the budget. Um, so we run a lot of different scenarios uh, to look at what it's, what we expect personnel costs to look like. Little bit harder this year because of course, we don't have the salary benchmarking study back yet. Um, but we uh, have done some estimations so that we can um, have money that, you know, we can use when that benchmarking comes back for salary adjustments where needed. And then programming, as we're now um, pandemic adjacent. I'm not sure what to call. I don't feel like calling it post-pandemic yet is quite there. But um, programming continues to be of course, um, a main area of services. We offer patrons, um, but now there is the ongoing, um, you know, discussion of what, how much should we have in person versus virtual? What should be hybrid? Um, and then what are the different costs associated with those? So that continues to be a discussion. We've been having that discussion for the last few years with the budget. And that continues to be an area of focus when we're putting together the budget. Um, we are a heavily used building, so every year there's furniture and equipment to replace. So Anna keeps a lovely fixed assets list um, that we look at to determine what needs to be replaced uh, or what might need to be replaced and um, maintaining, in to, in order to maintain the physical building interior. And then technology, um, just like with liability insurance, this continues to go up because there are more and more safeguards needed to be put in place. So Kelly works very closely with OSG to determine what our um, needs are for the upcoming year to make sure that we are not only keeping current with technology, but also maintaining a very safe infrastructure that will hopefully would not experience any hacking issues. So now I'm going to turn it over to Anna, who's going to talk about where does all our money come from and what are we expecting to get this next year?
Um, so when I put budget together, I looked at prior year data. And then I tried to forecast where I thought we would be if a fiscal year twenty-three to twelve with the numbers. And the levy number is what was voted on in the fall. And then I estimated interest income and what we would get from fees from patrons. Uh, one of the numbers in revenue that went up quite a bit is designated revenue. And that number went up because of Illinois Library Presents. Uh, one of the numbers in revenue that went up quite a bit is designated revenue and that number went up because of Illinois Library Presents. We are. Helping Illinois Library Presents with. Um, cutting the checks for the programs that that initiative is carrying on. So Rails collects all of the revenue and then they send it to us. So that's why that number went up and then. The expenses went up an equal amount to cover the expenses. So it it's it's an in and an out, but if. If you look at it, you'll see that it has gone up quite a bit over from last year. Does anybody have any questions about revenue?
I go through that.
Oh, okay. I was just talking about operating. Um, this is like an I M R F and. This is ba- basically just the levy that was approved in the fall. Um, debt service, that is the number that we will owe for the debt that we have. So that's the number that was levied. And then this is the capital improvement fund and we will get interest income as well as. We budget a transfer in the general fund to go to the capital improvement fund. And the numbers for all of our projects and master, you know, that includes the master plan in the future, not. Just the projects that will be happening next year. So this was the levy that was approved in the fall and. Part of that eight million six number is the operating funds transfer of four hundred and twenty five thousand. And we also, if. There's always about two percent of the levy that's not collected, so there's always a little bit of money that's not collected for debt service. So just to true it up. We out, we will budget an amount to transfer to debt service if it's needed. So now the fun part, the expenses. So I look at the expenses the same way I look at revenue. I look at prior year data. Um, and. Get input from all of the departments to see if they have anything new or if. They're aware of any changes they would like to make to their expenses. So the biggest line item on our income statement is. Personnel. Um. So we, what I did was I looked at what our salaries and wages are right now. And then tried to put an increase in to that will take into account the benchmarking. I also included all of our open positions. Um, that we have, that we know we would like to hire.
So can I just ask a question? So why do you, I mean, personnel services, you break it up salaries and wages and maintenance salaries and wages. Why is there a? Like a delineation between the.
It's more for reporting, like we have to report maintenance um for insurance purposes as well as. In the I P L R, th- they like that, those numbers broken out. And so if we break it out when I'm doing it monthly rather than just once a year, it's a little bit easier.
So salaries and wages, the first line item is that's just.
Everyone that isn't in the maintenance department.
Which is, yeah, three people.
Yeah.
Yeah, or four people, yeah, the open position as well. So, yeah. But it's just that those, that number needs to be broken out for, um, it's just easier than I don't have to always.
For workers' comp, you're charged a different rate for maintenance versus um other staff. So this makes it very easy that they know that this is all the maintenance staff versus the other staff, um, because they assume. Probably wrongly, but that maintenance staff are more prone to possibly having workers' comp claims because they're doing more manual work in libraries. So. That's the liability piece that Anna was talking about with the insurance.
Um, and then fringe benefits is made up of our group insurance, unemployment, workers' comp and staff development and. The group insurance number, it includes existing staff as well as open positions that might. Uh, that are eligible for insurance. So that's why that number is big. Um, we we all currently have two employees who do not take insurance, but I. Add a number in for those two employees in case they were to leave and then we had to hire somebody who needed insurance just so that we could be covered. So. That's why when you look at this, like you're like, oh, wow, why is she doing that? That's why.
We also have a qualifying life event and this year. Say, hey.
So we just need to make sure that everybody who's eligible for insurance, we have the funds to cover that. Okay, um commodities, so materials. We like to have at about twelve percent of our expenses and we're, we're right there. So that's good and. All of the department's requests were met. Um, we didn't have to adjust those numbers at all, so. We, that was kinda nice. Um, programs. As Kate explained, that number is kind of going up to where it was in twenty twenty. In fiscal year twenty four, we're going to be hosting one book on Northbrook again, so um staff is excited and and that will. That will have some expenses related to it. Um. Software, we go through it detailed with O S G and we ask for their input. As well as put a five percent increase on most of those items, just to make sure that we can, if if there are any increases in those numbers. Um, community relations, we. We had, uh, we are seeing a big increase in paper costs. So the management team had a discussion this week and we are going to be shifting from having, offering six newsletters. For the year to four news newsletters for the year. Which will help staff. Um, they need to like kind of rethink how they're gonna do their programming, because rather than doing it for two months, they're gonna be doing it quarterly. But we'll also give them a little bit of time in between newsletter cycles now. So I I I think everybody was really excited about it. So that was, it was, it was a good thing.
Yeah, and then can I just mention with the paper costs, because I, we were kind of blown away when we got the quotes for next year. Um, we typically spend thirty six thousand dollars on a sixteen page nine by twelve newsletter that goes out. Six times a year to our fifteen thousand plus residents. Um, the new cost for the exact same thing was forty five thousand, which is. A massive increase. So so by switching to quarterly, um, and that doesn't include the postage cost. By switching to quarterly will not only, of course, save on postage, but we'll be able to maintain um that it'll be thirty five thousand. Um, to do that. So paper costs are definitely increasing and um in speaking with our. Current vendor who came in as the lowest bidder for the different companies this year, um, when Linda got quotes. They said to continue to expect paper costs to go higher. We have not seen this impacting. Book prices yet, but I think it's only a matter of time, right?
So the Amazon boxes again?
Yeah, it's still the boxes. Uh, yeah, because a lot of the manufacturing companies that were making paper, there was a huge decrease during the early days of the pandemic. And so they switched to making cardboard boxes because online shipment went up and they discovered that it was much easier to do boxes than to do different. Weights and types of paper. And so now paper um prices are skyrocketing as as evidenced. So. Um, and so like, for instance, our uh newsletter printer um. Has to like reserve paper to make sure that he gets enough paper to do our newsletter printing. And before they could, you know, ask for, you know, say they needed ten cases, they could ask for that, but now they might ask for ten, but they might only get eight. Um, so it's definitely, and it's not just a supply chain issue, it's just a production issue because there isn't any to ship anywhere. So, so stop ordering online, only shop local. Here, keep the book safe, no.
And then janitorial supplies. Um, so then with contractual services, we have O C L C and C C S. Um, those costs are actually going down because they're adding more libraries to the consortium, so that's, that's an exciting thing. Um. Photo copy costs, they went down this year because some are. Our equipment is off lease, but in so now we only have to pay the maintenance on it and the equipment doesn't need to be upgraded. So that that was kind of nice. Um, general insurance, as Kate explained, went up because of cyber and just. Cost for insurance. Telephone and internet is pretty consistent and. Professional services went up because of the strategic plan and. Um, you know, hiring those consultants for the year. Equipment rental and maintenance stayed consistent. Everything else kind of stayed consistent. Um, furniture and equipment went up this year because we do have some technology type projects we're going to do. We need to um replace all the. Wi-Fi.
Access.
Access points, thank you, in the building. So uh, that is gonna be a project. Um, and then contingency and more development, and then she's just a catchall and then. More development numbers stayed consistent.
How, how long is the, the last time the access points were updated?
It was twenty six.
Twenty six years.
Seven, twenty sixteen. I I remember doing it.
And that was a bigger project because we had to do wiring for that. Like this time, we just have to replace the.
Is that when we like switched I T vendors or something?
That was the first time when our I T manager had just retired and we were working with client first. This was a project we did with them and then um after, and then after that, we switched to O S G.
And then designated expenses went up, as I explained, for Illinois Library Presents cost. And then we have the transfers to debt service and C I F. So this is, um, this kind of breaks down. The percentage of each of these lines is a total it to the total. So as you can see, personnel services and fringe benefits, I mean, that makes up a majority of the budget. Materials falls in the commodities line. Does anybody have any questions? Did anybody see anything that was concerning?
What that you'd like more detail on the next time?
So the surplus is a whopping nine hundred dollars right now?
Yes.
Look at how good I am.
That's in the black. That's not a, that's not a red nine hundred.
I understand it's not a red nine hundred, but it's not exactly a lot of money. So how comfortable are you with those budget numbers? You know, if you have some significant changes over the course of the year.
I'm pretty comfortable. Um, I mean, there's the, there are documents in the board port- portal where. There are account reconciliations that we do every month and um. I've basically gone line by line of all of the. Oh, no, that's okay. No, I mean, so the documents that are in the board portal are the account reconciliations that I do every month. And so I've put a number to everything that we've paid for in the last like five or six years. If I think we're gonna have an expense for it, I have an estimate, but you know, a conservative estimate on that line. So I'm pretty comfortable that it's okay. And prior year budgets, we haven't had a huge surplus.
Yeah, it's like the most was thirty six. Well, unless you go back to twenty.
Right. Numbers, because I mean, that way, you know, if inflation goes up more than expected next year, you're not giving yourself a lot of pressure.
For the expenses, um, most of the things you already know the pricing, like.
Contracts and stuff.
We put an estimate in for the strategic plan because we obviously haven't gone out to bid, but we have a pretty good idea of what the cost is based on.
And the salaries, which is more than half and the materials, so like seventy eight percent of that is like very well factual. Yeah.
I'm comfortable with it. I mean, I.
The salaries are still the benchmark, so you know, there is.
Wouldn't that be next year, though?
It'll be this next fiscal year, which is this budget that we're looking at, but Anna has accounted for that.
And and that, um, and keep in mind, the. The benchmarking, our intention is not. To have all of the increase take place in fiscal year twenty four. It, we were.
Depending on how it looks.
But we were thinking that it might be a step approach. So, you you know, we're, we were kind of. Taking that into account as well.
We don't know how the bench, I mean, the benchmarking could come back and there could be no appreciable shift, um, right? So there's that as well until we get those numbers.
We always would have the option to to delay it or scale it a little later if we had to, if we didn't have it in the budget. It's not like it's something we have to do. It's gonna cause us to have a negative.
If, I will say that if anyone is below the minimum, which I would find very hard to believe. Um, we would wanna move them immediately to the minimum.
We can control the impact that it has on our deficit.
Yeah, so for instance, at New Lennox, when I did a salaries, they didn't have a salary schedule. And so when we did a salary. Benchmarking project, we had to break it up over three years because the costs were so massive that we couldn't afford to do it in one year. So we, you know, we obviously wanna make sure that we're paying staff equitably and appropriately for the work that they're doing. But certainly, if there are adjustments, it doesn't mean we have to do everything all at once. Like I had a. Um, a couple of staff that were more than ten thousand below the minimum. Um, so those were immediately raised to the minimum, but then other staff that were low, you know, where they should have been, they might have only gotten. Half or a quarter and then the next year they got the remainder for the year after. So. Yeah, we will know more when we get that back, which should hopefully be mid to late March is what H R source has said. So most likely the April board meeting. I'm anticipating being able to share that with staff or with the board. Sorry, you're not staff or?
And just that, um, furniture and equipment, I mean, that's.
That seems like a big jump as well.
It's because of the wireless access point replacement.
That falls in equipment, okay.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's a majority of that number.
Any questions, anyone else? Comments?
Do you want to see any changes?
If you do think of any questions later, please feel free to reach out to Anna and I. I love sitting on and talking about numbers, your favorite thing.
Thank you, Anna. Um, no action, I have done the budget this month, so next month, be prepared. Um, next item on the agenda is the Palatine library visit on March first. So we're gonna be, need to be at Palatine at six P M. Um. If there's anyone who can't defend, please let us, as in Kate.
Kate, I don't think I responded to the.
Are you coming?
We're just assuming, I'm assuming everyone that's coming is coming to dinner. So Jennifer made the reservation for everyone.
Okay, so I have standby jury duty on that day. And I have twenty sixth in California. I know. And it didn't sound like it's easy.
Can you tell them that you have a very important library visit?
I don't think that's gonna get me out of it. So I will not.
Want to get out of it, though, because you.
Oh, no, you're right. I want to just do my civic duty. Um, but.
The location also.
Well, you have to call it maybe four.
Hey, what I'm saying is I can't tell you until the, basically the day of.
Assume that you're coming.
Okay, it's standby, so.
Just to let you know, you have plenty of time to make it to dinner though.
Twenty six in California.
I don't know, twenty six in California. You know, but I have home responsibilities. I don't know what the deal is gonna be, so I'm a maybe.
On the way from.
Okay.
Someone say where we're meeting again.
Are we meeting in Palatine or are we meeting here? We're gonna meet in Palatine, okay.
Carpool with someone and then. You don't think I have a car by then?
Oh, Jay, you're.
Um, Anna said that she's. With Anna and Kelly probably will as well.
Well, I'm coming home from.
I'll be there. I never leave my house, this is very exciting.
So does anyone want to drive together? You can, I, you can either come.
Going to the backseat of Anna's car. She says it's small, but that'll be okay. I know, it's my car is like that too.
Okay, great. And then, please let us know, Jennifer found this delightful Argentinean restaurant for us to go to. But I know that there are often, you know, in the world, different dietary restrictions. So if you take a look at it and there are any issues, please let us know.
Good to talk to you.
I know.
Did look at that, but Jennifer. Know about if there's any allergies or anything. Okay, great.
Thank you.
I am a maybe for next month's, um. Or meeting, I might have a performance for my daughter. I'm not sure. My husband and I may be taking different performances, but I will let you know once we get closer to it.
Sounds good.
When you tell you where I'll be.
Paris, we know, we know where you'll be.
Is this because there's another conference for your?
Anyway.
I want your job.
Um, I think, yeah, that's my twenty twenty three.
You'll be here in April, though, right?
I will be here in April.
You have to be here.
Celebrate my twelve years.
Well, you have to be here May two, because we need you for like ten minutes in May.
We'll pass the torch.
I'm going to, but I won't escape on the last couple of meetings after I put all this time in.
Making sure.
Just the ones we hear in Paris.
Next item on the agenda is a strategic plan process. And so this is supposed to be just a general discussion and decide kind of where do we want to go with strategic planning? About ten years since we did the formal. Five years.
Yeah, we did the process in twenty seventeen.
Yes, twenty seventeen, we went through the formal process with the consultants of doing. Uh, the strategic plan, we came in, we have all sorts of fun meetings. Um, and so the question is. We want to do that kind of process again. We did not do a community survey, um, with that process. Time to risk, or to keep the cost down and not do a new survey. So we might want to consider the possibility during a community survey because of all the changes. Gone thanks to COVID and, you know, just advances and changes and like. And then the third item that Kate already brought up is we do want to consider ways to. Um, have some sort of crossover between the strategic planning and the E D I consulting. So that A, we're not duplicating and having two different places, I am doing the same thing or. You know, paying twice for the same thing effectively. So, we do need to update the strategic plan as we're getting towards the. We're past the point to work and projected attitude, but, you know, Kate has brought up that, you know, if we don't want to. Necessarily have a, you know, full skill consultant come in that she and the staff put just strategic planning in-house. Um, in order to update and, but that wouldn't be the necessarily the, um, survey. You could look at outside resources for the survey. Um, Kate was telling me about the, was it Northern Illinois?
Yeah, Northern Community Lab, they do surveys.
That those surveys that she could turn to as a resource to help with surveying the community. Or to get feedback and to make sure that we are. Questions, anyone?
Was the entire board involved? I know you were, and Jay, I think you were part of it too, right? But I didn't see your name when I pulled up the plan and didn't have your name on it unless I missed it. Maybe I just did, maybe I missed it. My question is, did every, not everybody participated, not all the board members or all the board members?
We had a strategic planning committee made up of staff and board members, um, and then we had a, uh, uh. A workshop with the consultant with staff and board, which was the full board. And then the full board, um, you know, weighed in on the strategic priorities and then that allowed us to establish the action steps. Um, the committee then, you know, established those and then brought it back to the full board to approve.
So I don't remember if it was them being part of the committee that like we worked with the library staff, but I really enjoyed that. I hope we can do that again.
It, whatever process it goes, we will have that.
Okay, that one's fun. And again, everyone who didn't do it would enjoy that as well. Um, well, just because, like, you never really get to work one on one with the staff and this kind of stuff, um. But to your other point of not using a consultant, I think we should use a consultant so that we really can, so much has changed. We did this, I feel like, I don't want to just do it with, just, I, I would prefer to have a formal. Consultant come in and help us with it.
With a strategic plan?
Yeah.
With the survey?
Well, both, I guess.
I don't think this is actually, I think we should see what the costs are to have help with the survey too.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can tell you that typically a strategic plan consultant will cost between twenty and forty thousand. I don't know how much it'll be just for a survey. So.
Well, would that.
But that, the.
Twenty to forty include the survey or no?
Yes, and, and possibly focus groups, each strategic planning consultant, you know, will pitch how they tend to do it. So some rely fully solely on focus groups, some will gather like all the data, like all of the patron comments we get. And all of the, you know, different ways that patrons communicate with us and use that. Um, often it's like a combo approach, so, and then you can do a more formal, like hiring a third party. Company to do a really formal, um, community wide survey. One thing I think it is important to do with this is, um, to make sure whatever, you know, whether we are doing it, we're hiring someone. We're working, um, with a survey company is that we need to make sure that we're, um. Getting data and information from people that aren't regular library users. Because it's very easy for us to get data from our regular library users. We send out a survey and people are like, yes, let me tell you all the things. But it's much harder to find the people that don't use it and get them and find out, well, why don't you use it? And are, you know, are you aware of what we offer? So that, that piece I think is gonna be the most important from the community surveying piece of tapping those markets. And that could be just, maybe we're just focusing on those, you know, non-users, so.
What does, um, I guess Kate and, and Kelly think of, do you prefer to have a consultant? Or like how, like, or do you prefer to do it yourself?
I mean, I told Jay that I, I could, I mean, I did that because again, at New Lenox, we did not have any money for anything, so I did it. But of course, with a consultant, they, that's then all on their plate. We work very close, I mean, it's not like we would be just be like, hey, go figure it out. There'd still be a lot of work, um, done with the consultant. I think it was more just. If the board chooses to work, you know, with Lily Zhang or with potentially, you know, another E D I consultant. Not duplicating those efforts. So if we're doing a community survey with that, do we need to also do that with the strategic plan? Or do we do a modified, you know, version, which could be like kind of a strategic plan light? There's a lot of different methods. I guess I'm most interested in knowing from the board. What do you hope to see at the end of this? Like what, um, you know, what things are important to you to make sure we're looking at? Cause that will then help with determining how the, how I write the R F P.
I think we would get different results from a consultant in terms of community and staff feedback on what the priorities are. Versus if staff were asking the questions. So I think in, in that respect, yeah. I think it would be really helpful. And I also think a consultant would come in with a process. And we certainly have been through strategic planning processes and, and can replicate that. But that is their expertise, so, so that's helpful as well.
Yeah, I agree, having it facilitated. And also then somebody who will work with a third party, like an E D I vendor, if we choose to go down that road. Some, out, someone who has that flexibility to.
And would this be in fiscal twenty four?
I mean, we would start the, you know, work this fiscal year to find a consultant, you know, and start the work, but yeah, the bulk of it. So are there other things that the board would like to see in terms of areas of focus? Like I had mentioned, you know, we have, we've really been focusing on sustainability and our equity diversity and inclusion initiatives. Are there other things that we want to make sure to mention with the consultant or other things the board would? Like to make sure we're investigating? Touched on this, just making sure that, um. There are outreaches to everyone in the community, which I feel like it is, but. Yeah, without having. I think that would be. And whether or not, you know, if. I mean.
Let's look forward, yes, yes.
Let's, yeah, yeah, we'll look forward rather than back. But I think it would be interesting to find out how people's, um, lives have changed and how they use their community resources. Like, there's this museum, um, survey vendor that I follow. And they were regularly assessing how people were using museums and, um, theaters during the pandemic. And what they found is people went hyper local. Um, and so that now they're seeing is kind of having a lasting impact. So for large, like Chicago, are people from Naperville still regularly making the trip into Chicago? Um, so kind of figuring out, are they looking more towards the hyper local like us as a public library? Are they looking for different things now because they don't want to go into the city? Um, like that would be a really interesting thing to learn. Um, how has COVID changed their people's patterns of what they're doing and how they're, you know, engaging with educational and recreational activities?
Be interested in learning that, just if, post, um, pre, post pandemic, if there are shifted demands, needs. And viewpoints, uh, how they see the library.
Yeah.
And our libraries specifically.
It's fascinating to walk around the study rooms during the day now. Um, you know, we didn't have the huge bank before, um, but now regularly they're almost all booked. Um, and, and not just like, oh, well, after school, like, no, all, all the time. It's really interesting. People are working from home or? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, or they want to have like a different, you know, environment, or they have to have, you know, a good internet connection because they're doing, you know, a Zoom interview or whatever. But. Hard to see. The bright.
Is there any questions, comments? Anything else anyone wanna, do you have questions you want to ask before?
Um, I mean, I think the only other thing is really just. One of the things that we did with the last strategic plan was we did do a revision of our mission statement. I, this is just my own personal preference. I feel like everyone should be able to state the mission statement. It shouldn't be overly long. Ours is still pretty long, and so I'd like to still do a revision of the mission statement, even though what we do fundamentally hasn't changed. I think having it something be a little bit shorter is helpful because then it's easier to reinforce with people. And then also while our values, I feel are still our core values, I do feel like it would be good to revisit those as well. Because that would be something that I think has shifted, and I think that there are additional values that we can represent. That it would be good to be able to call out and say these are core values to the. So, um, and that I think it's important to have, to gather not only all of the qualitative data, but also some quantitative data. That we're using to inform decision making, because there's, yeah, it's just good to marry the two of those. So, um, unless the board has objections, I'm gonna include that in the R F P. It'll extend the process a little bit, but I think it's helpful for us to, it's good to look at that anyway during a strategic process. One question, this came up when we were doing the signatures for the election. Is there any, and not the specific question, but. For people who live outside of, or who are unincorporated Northbrook, is there any, um, program in place that if they?
That is the non-resident fee.
Right, but if they are, um, of a lower income or a fixed income or of a certain age, is there any sort of like? Discount or anything that they are eligible for? There is not. Um, and so the way that is written into the statute, that was what the cards which is. You know, started as just an income based one, and then, you know, the board, um, expanded it. So that is something that is determined in the statutes. Um, but we choose, and you'll be proving this again next month, the non-resident fee method that we use is the tax bill method. So you can either do it, um, calculating an average per capita cost, or you can use the actual tax bill. So it's looking at the property value to determine the cost. And then for renters, it is, um, a percentage of their monthly rent. So, there is not anything, but, um. It, so it depends on what their taxes are and then it, yeah, I don't have a good, I, I wish that there was something.
Someone asked about that and.
But there is not, there is not.
But if their rent is lower. Age, though, if, if they have a homeowner's, I mean, it's all based upon their property tax bill. So if they receive. The homeowner's exemptions from the county that affects their non-resident fee to the library.
Okay.
But if they lived in Incorporated Northbrook, they, you, you know, it's all calculated the same way.
Yeah. Yeah, and that I think is really important to let people know, because I think sometimes they come in like, oh my gosh, it's, you know, it's a couple hundred dollars, like. Yes, it is a couple hundred dollars, but it's the exact same as if they were, they would be paying it in their property taxes if they lived in, in Incorporated. So. So, and I know, well, I know Kelly had to go outside, but, um, one of the things that, um, Glenview has and that Kelly I know has been talking about with our friends of the library is. They have a fund for people, um, set aside so that they could apply and get either a discounted rate. That the friends then supplement with, um, so Kelly, I know, has been talking to our friends group about the possibility of doing that, so. That would be something to know that hopefully will be.
Good questions? Alright, so, um. No more action items on that either. Um, that's it for the new business. The next item is both session, personal, um, procession items on the agenda this. Next item is agenda building. So at next month's meeting, uh, the agenda includes more discussion about strategic plan. Uh, revisiting the anticipated full draft budget. Uh, as Kate just said, the annual review of the non-resident B method, there will be a staff presentation and ordering materials. And then we'll talk a little bit more as Kate has more information about the Louis Sang E D I consultant proposal. Or anything else anyone would want to add to the.
I forgot to put on, it's also the time to select the, um, nominating committee members for the board office.
Maybe someone who's excited about that.
But that as well will be on there.
Alright, anything else, Sharon? I mean, you're not gonna be here, but is there anything we want us to talk about while you're not here?
Do we have any action items from our Palatine visit that we need to put on there?
We could, under the board, I mean, I can put the Palatine visit about it. Yeah, when we're at the library, we are in, yeah, it'll be an official meeting, so we could talk about it there.
That came up there that we want to discuss, I don't know if we want to.
We can see.
It goes and then we need to.
Anything else? All right, then I will adjourn the meeting at just about a minute before nine.